I'd also like to start the meetings with a remembrance of people who have contributed a great amount to the town and have passed on since the last time we met. In late May, we lost Maureen T. Lowe. She was the Finance Committee Secretary and really did more to teach me about town politics than anybody else. Longtime Kauanee member George McLaughlin certainly was a tremendous part of our community, and he passed away in July. And then in August, in what is a horrible tragedy, we lost National Guard pilot Scott Landis, much too young of an age. So if we could all just take a moment to remember them. The rules of tonight's meeting will be Town Meeting Time, which is the official handbook of the Moderators Association. I believe there's only two copies in the hall, and both of them are up here, but please follow along if you brought yours. I never know. So, we have 24 articles to discuss tonight, and hopefully we can make short work of it. Article One, Mr. Dyer.
I move the town to vote -- can you guys hear me?
Try a little closer.
All right. I move to the town to vote to transfer $12,165 from free cash to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2018. There are a few unpaid bills from various departments which were received after the fiscal year 2018.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Dyer, explanation?
There are a few unpaid bills from various departments which were received after the end of the fiscal year 2018.
Now, this requires a nine-tenths vote. Yes, ma'am. Yes, I am. You're a mind reader. Now, with the nine-tenths votes and the two-thirds votes, it's much easier if I can have permission from the town meeting to judge whether it's nine-tenths or two-thirds. If someone disputes my decision on that, we can always go to a hand vote. No problem, just make the motion. But could I have a motion to allow me to judge the quantum of the vote? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. Any discussion, comments, or questions on Article One? Ms. Marini, could you please come to the microphone and state your name and address?
Kathleen Marini, 181 Union Street. Could we just have the balance in free cash and in water surplus?
Thank you. Fresh off the computer, free cash stands at $1,514,965. The stabilization fund stands at $1,150,924. The school stabilization fund is at $70,494. The water surplus is at $1,065,513. The ambulance receipts are $1,111,61. And in the community preservation fund, for open space, we have $159,856. And for affordable housing, we have $185,223. You're welcome. Any other questions or comments on Article One? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article One by a nine-tenths vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a nine-tenths vote. Article One is adopted. Article Two, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $70,600 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2018 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 for various town departments as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second? Mr. Hickey.
The purpose of this article is to supplement a number of line items in the current fiscal year's budget, FY19, in order to fund additional expenses. The explanations are included on the spreadsheet.
Any questions or comments on Article Two? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Two signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Two is adopted. Article Three. The Fire Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I move the town vote to transfer $325,000 from ambulance receipts reserved account to purchase and equip an ambulance as well as a power stretcher and patient loading system.
Seconded, Chief.
These funds will be utilized to purchase and equip a new ambulance as well as the patient loading system.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Three signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Three is adopted. Article Four. Chief.
I move the town vote to transfer $25,000 from free cash to purchase ballistic protection for all full-time members.
Chief.
These funds will be used to purchase ballistic protection for our full-time staff.
Any questions or comments on Article Four? Oh, if you could, please come to the microphone, sir. State your name and address.
Glenn Smith, 64 Caban Nathaniel. Question whether we can have these funds actually taken out of ambulances instead of general funding.
It's currently coming out of free cash, so this is where the Finance Committee and the Selectmen chose to take the money from.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Four signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Four is adopted.
Thank you.
Article Five, Mr. Garvey.
I move that the town appropriate $1.3 million to pay a cost of purchasing and installing water meters, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is authorized to borrow the amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8, Subsection 6, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of the costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, therefore reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Do we have a second? Mr. Garvey.
The Water Department seeks to move forward with the meter replacement program by replacing aging infrastructure and to streamline the meter reading operations, improve customer service, and improve the meter reading billing reliability and efficiency. This modernization will include a townwide replacement of new meters, reading devices, software, and equipment. Also, a private installation company will be placing the meters throughout the town.
Now, this requires a two-thirds majority. Any questions or comments? Mr. Norton.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Oh, I'm sorry. John Norton, 31 Indian Path, Hanson, Mass. Through you to the Water Department. How many meters is this? Because the Capitol Improvement Committee has been given that the Water Department are carrying on the Water Department. They pay for it, $75,000 a year for meters, and it was my understanding this was an ongoing I hear he's saying he's going to use an outside department to install them. I don't know why we're rushing it, and the committee had a little bit of a concern that if we bought so many at one time, would they all obsolete at the same time? Would we be facing this 10, 20, whatever the life expectancy of these is down the line? If we phase in electronic things, then they tend to phase out in smaller quantities. So I just want to know, how many meters is this, and how much is it costing us to have them installed?
Mr. Howard.
Good evening. There's 3,700 meters in the town for all the residents in the building. And the problem is, we have three different types of meters in town, and what we're doing is, we're going to take all the meters out and replace all of them at once. So they'll be all the same, and it's going to save a lot of man-hours for the simple reason, we have to run with three or four guys when you read the meters, and all the new meters will be done electronically. They'll just have to have one man, and he'll be able to do the whole town in one, you know, by himself.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Norton.
I still wanted to know the breakdown of how much for the meters and how much for
Mr. Howard.
I just haven't been informed. We haven't opened the bids yet to find out exactly how much money it's going to be, but it's going to be a considerable savings to the Water Department because we'll increase our income by having all the new meters installed in town at once.
Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Marini.
I would be curious to know when this is going to impact our tax rate and by how much approximately.
Sure. Mr. Howard.
It won't affect the tax rate at all. It's all being done within the income of the Water Department.
So the water rates go up?
No.
The question was, will the water rates go up? Mr. Howard responded, no. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Five, and again, this needs to be done by a two-thirds majority, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. By a two-thirds majority, Article Five is adopted. And before we go on to the next article, because it's so unusual, but we have two guests. We have both members of our legislative delegation here tonight, Representative Josh Cutler and Senator Brady, and welcome both of you. Mr. Garvey.
I move that the town vote to transfer $500,000 from water surplus to be added to the funds appropriated under Article 23 of the May 4, 2015 Annual Town Meeting for additional water exploration.
Seconded. Mr. Garvey.
The town is currently in the process of exploring a well site off Old Pine Drive. This money will get us into the next phase for drilling of the test wells, short-term pump tests, water sampling, and source approval from DEP if the site proves favorable.
Any questions or comments on Article Six? Could you stand up, Mr. Campbell?
What was the amount that was funded to grow on our 203 in 2015?
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Six signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Six is adopted. Article Seven, Ms. Marini.
Kathleen Marini, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to fund the fiscal year 2018 to 2020 interim year adjustments and the commercial, industrial, personal property cyclical recertification of the town's real estate and personal property values as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Ms. Marini.
The Massachusetts General Laws require that the valuations be recertified every five years. All building schedules, land tables, depreciation schedules, et cetera, are recalculated according to the current real estate market. New income and expense figures are also adopted based on the current commercial industrial market. This is to fund the contract changes adopted to the prior legislation amendments imposing a five-year requirement. The estimated amount is, well, $10,000.
Any questions or comments on Article Seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seven signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Seven is adopted. Article Eight, Mr. Clemmons.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from free cash the amount of $3,500 to add zoning and conservation layers to PPGIS in order to create and print new zoning map books.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Clemmons.
As presented before us, all our land use departments are using books dating back to 1997. They're 21-years-old. They have the zones delineated. Unfortunately, omitted from these books are all streets and developments constructed since 1997. Also, these books will include updated zoning and conservation layers. This will be a much-needed asset for use by all the land use departments. It'll help all of us in the Town Hall to serve the public much more efficiently.
Any questions or comments on Article Eight?
Good evening. Don Ellis, Chairman of the Planning Board. This would be very beneficial to the planning, land planning in the town. We can use these records updated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ellis. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eight signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Eight is adopted. Article Nine, Mr. Lynn.
I move that the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from free cash or available funds for the 200th Anniversary Committee--
I'm sorry, Mr. Lynn. I hate to interrupt you, but I believe the motion should be, I move the town vote to transfer--
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash or available funds to the 200th Anniversary Committee account, or take--
There you go.
There we go.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Let's try this again. I move the town vote to transfer $50,000 from free cash to the 200th Anniversary Committee account.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Lynn.
These funds will be used to start the process for events commemorating the town's 200th Anniversary, estimated amount $50,000.
Any questions or comments on Article Nine?
Yes, you said it now.
Oh.
I did. They did over here. They did over here.
I am Spartacus. Any questions or comments on Article Nine? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Nine signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Nine is adopted. Article Ten, Mr. Mitchell.
I move that the town will vote to transfer $35,000 from free cash to fund a needs analysis of the Hanson Senior Center, both operations and facilities.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Howard, Mr. Mitchell. Doesn't seem to be any explanation. Any questions or comments on Article Ten?
On mine, there's no explanation.
Oh, Mr. Mitchell.
These funds will be used to conduct an evaluation project focusing on identifying Hanson's needs with respect to providing services to our older residents, particularly towards current and future facility needs.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Soper.
I have a question. Why is our Finance Committee not recommending?
Mr. Sullivan.
We took a look at the dollar value requested, and there wasn't a hard and fast reason given for the $35,000. It was a general $35,000 for the study, which was quickly going to escalate, in our opinion. So we took a look at it from a dollars and cents standpoint and said, without an in-depth analysis, in-depth breakdown of how the money was going to be spent, we voted not to recommend.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, the Town Administrator, please.
Just as a point of clarification, those numbers came from Jan Mutler, who is the Director of Senior and Social Demographic Research on Aging at UMass Boston. She's conducted probably about 20 to 25 of these studies, and the estimate came from
Any other questions or comments on Article Ten? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Ten signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. I believe the ayes have it. Would someone like a hand count? All right. A hand count has been asked. All those in favor of Article Ten, could you please signify by holding up the blue card that you received when you came in, and hold it up until the tellers are done counting, please. Thirty-five? Thirty-five?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card now. Mr. Norton?
Ten.
Ten.
Seven.
Seven.
Fourteen, 1-4.
Fourteen. So, carry the one. Sixty-three, yea, versus 31, nay. Article Ten is adopted. And since we've now had a vote, it's probably a good time to announce that we had 108 voters check in tonight. Article Eleven, Ms. Kement.
I move the town vote to transfer $47,600 from free cash to secure and weatherize the building and grounds of the former McQuann School, both internally and externally, and to fund the analysis of hazardous materials within the building.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
These funds will be used to secure and winterize the building once the school district has returned the building to the town. In addition, the hazardous materials study will be funded with this article.
Before we take questions and comments, and I do see you, Mr. Soper, I just wanted to point out, the Town Administrator asked me to talk about the McQuann reuse survey. It's available tonight. You can fill it out and just leave it on the table on your way out. It would be very helpful to hear from the townspeople what they would like to do with the property once it is returned to the town. Mr. Soper.
David Soper, 176 High Street.
One moment, Ms. Fitzgerald.
I'm sorry. I wanted to offer a bit more of an explanation than is in the warrant. And so we've got a McQuann, let's call it future use, group that we've put together, and we've been really trying to do what's best for the town in terms of the use of that property, economically most feasible for that property. And one of the things that's really been driving us is that it's contiguous to the library and the senior center, and it's also contiguous to the Indian Head School. So we want to be really careful about what we're doing with that property. That said, we explored with a real estate agency potentially coming up with some proposals. They really never got back to us despite following up on that. We RFP'd to see if maybe somebody would come forward in the private sector and have some fantastic idea that we hadn't thought about. That did not come to fruition. Nobody responded. We also approached the Hanson Housing Authority to see if that might be something that they would be interested in, and at this time, that's nothing that they want to approach. Initially, coming into town meeting, we had originally had a warrant article that was going to be for the demolition of the building. And when the committee got together at our last meeting, you know, before the warrant closed, they felt very strongly that we needed to explore one last option, and the last option was, could a portion of McQuann be used? Before we make the decision to demolish it, we can't put that genie back in the bottle once we do that, we wanted to make sure that we've done our due diligence and that if a portion can be reused, because we know we've got groups that need it, we know that we need a community center. We also know the seniors are busting at the seams. They've got the supportive day program, and then they've got the folks that are there during the day. They're on top of each other. The library is currently in the process of taking a look at additional space needs. And so we thought, with the confluence of all of those things, that it made a lot of sense for us to take this one last step of taking a look at, could we possibly reuse a portion of McQuann? That said, while that's being done, the building has to be winterized because if we don't winterize it, then there won't even be a question after the winter of whether that building can be reused because we will have burst pipes and various other sundry things that will have happened to the building. And in addition to that, the hazmat materials really need to be explored a bit. Although they were initially explored as part of the McQuann new school proposal versus what could be done with McQuann, they weren't really looked at with respect to reusing the portion of McQuann that we're looking at. So we've got to do a little bit of a deeper dive on that. So I just thought I would provide a little bit more color commentary on that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Soper.
Two things. Are there any deed restrictions on that property? And the second thing is, obviously, through you, Mr. Chairman, on why the Finance Committee does not recommend.
Anybody want to answer the first question?
To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe-- we've asked this question before, if there were deed restrictions. We were told, no, there were no deed restrictions on it.
Okay. When you say, "to the best of your knowledge," what does that mean?
I have asked the question. That's what I've been told. That's the best of my knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sure. When we met on September 24 to vote this, and there was no dollar amount given, so we were not willing to offer a blank check. So there was no dollar value given. We voted not to recommend at the time. The dollar value was later given after we had to have them submitted.
Can we-- I don't know if this is possible. Can we render an opinion from the Finance Committee before we move forward on this?
It wasn't a matter of that we were against it. There was just no dollar value. I think it's safe to assume--
Thank you.
--that we would recommend it. However, there was no dollar value given. We don't write blank checks.
Thank you.
Jim Armstrong, 65, Richard Road. As a member of the McQuann Committee--
Future Use Committee.
--I'm not sure what we call it now--
Future Use Committee.
--but-- One of the things we wanted to make sure was very clear is, there's a portion of the building that was built in 1985, and there's a portion of the building in the front that's actually in fairly decent condition, has very little issues underneath it. That's why we brought it up. I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we're not looking to just tear something down. When I was in a school committee, we went through this in Whitman, where we closed an elementary school. And if we closed their school, and the school department worked with us to tighten up the building, drain the water out, and make the building safe so that we did not waste the money that was put in their building originally. That's what we're asking for here, folks, is to be able to keep the building in case another group wants to use it. This is small money. $47,000 may seem like a lot of money, but when you look at what it costs to build a new building, it's worth to be able to secure the building so that we can use it again.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eleven signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Eleven is adopted. Article Twelve, Mr. Hayes.
I move that the town vote to transfer $28,126 for funds appropriated at the May 2016 Annual Town Meeting, and the October 2016 Special Town Meeting is printed in the warrant to construct a handicap ramp to the existing press box at the high school.
Seconded, Mr. Hayes.
The current elevator at the high school, as you know, the high school is approaching 13-years-old, has been in failure. Every year, it seems to be that other schools, having the same-- Every year, it seems to be that other schools are having the same problem. The elevators that they put out that are outside elevators don't last in the snow and the rain that we have here in New England. And it costs three to five thousand a year to service it. It's currently been taken out. Everybody is converting to ramps because ramps don't take any servicing like an elevator does. Pretty self-explanatory, you wheel somebody up that might be handicapped, and it has to be ADA compliant.
Any questions or comments on Article 12?
That is also Hanson's portion, the high school, the shared amount, that is Hanson's portion of the shared amount, which is forty percent.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 12 is adopted. Article 13, Ms. Norton.
I move that the town vote to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund to be used to develop engineering plans for a park at the former Plymouth County Hospital site.
Seconded.
As part of this next step to develop a portion of the former Plymouth County Hospital site into a park, the Final Plymouth County Reuse Committee and Board of Selectmen are recommended that the recent conceptual work of the Conway School of Landscape Design be converted into a set of engineering plans. These plans can then be used for determining cost estimates for future construction work on the site. These funds are limited to expenses related to the engineering plans only.
Thank you. I like how we have the McQuan Reuse Committee, but this is the Final Plymouth County Reuse Committee.
My fault, I'm sorry, it's Final Plymouth Reuse Committee.
No, 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 that's the official name, and I like how it's the final one. Someday, we'll have the Final McQuan Reuse Committee, probably well after I'm here. Any questions or comments on Article 13? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 13 is adopted. Article 14, Ms. Norton.
We'd like to pass over Article 14.
We have a motion to pass over Article 14, seconded, all those in favor of passing over signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 14 is passed over. Article 15, Mr. Sullivan.
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash fifty thousand dollars to be added to stabilization.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Mr. Sullivan.
This money will be used to increase the stabilization fund. A stabilization fund is a mechanism for setting aside money either for unforeseen needs or for capital projects. Such a fund is intended to equalize the effect of capital expenditures over time and to provide a rainy day fund. The dollar amount appropriated under this article will increase the stabilization fund to 1.2 million, sixteen dollars, which represents five percent of the operating budget. The town's target has been to maintain close to five percent, which is the industry standard minimum amount for stabilization funds, as recommended by our auditors, and will help to maintain a positive bond rating for future borrowing purposes.
Any questions or comments on Article 15? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 15 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 15 is adopted. Article 16, Mr. Blouse.
I move the town vote to transfer from precash twenty-five thousand dollars to be added to the regional schools' capital stabilization fund as established by the October 2014 special town meeting.
Seconded, Mr. Blouse.
The stabilization fund sets aside funds for the exclusive use of paying the capital improvements to the Hanson School Buildings and the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School.
Any questions or comments on Article 16? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 16 is adopted. Article 17, Mr. Dyer.
I move that the town to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease a portion of the Hanson Middle School for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a cell tower as printed in the warrant, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute and convey access and utility easements to, related thereto.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Mr. Dyer.
The purpose of this article is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease agreement with a wireless telecommunication provider to be named by the following procurement process. For the following portion of the Hanson Middle School property on which will be located a cell tower up to one hundred and seventy-five feet in height, the construction of said tower will result in greater cellular coverage in the Hanson addition into providing anticipated revenue to stream to the town.
This requires a two-thirds vote. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required two-thirds vote. Article 17 is adopted. Article 18, Mr. Hayes.
I move that the town vote to approve the amended Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement dated June 6, 2018, a copy of which is on file at the Town Clerk's Office.
Seconded, Mr. Hayes.
The regional agreement hadn't been updated since the early 90s, and it had been changed, not changed, but there's been additions to it. Some of it was written in, some of it was typed in, it was a lengthy document that was outdated. Had schools, this particular school wasn't even in the agreement. It had schools that had been shelved already that weren't in the agreement. So, we impaneled the committee, one of the Board of Selectmen, we had everybody from different boards in town on the committee to look over the regional agreement. We changed everything and upgraded and updated everything that needed to be changed by Mass General laws. We also had a regional agreement, three members from the state come in and serve on the committee to make sure that we are doing everything legal. Then they send it to Department of Education and Secondary Education to make sure they agree with it. Then they send it to the lawyers of the two towns and their lawyers, and made sure that it was all in agreement and a legal and authorized document. So, we updated that, so it's in 2018 language.
Thank you. The only difference I wanted was to change the name to the Hanson-Whitman Regional School District. Did that make it in?
I'll try to get that done for you, but I'm not sure that's going to work.
More negotiation.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Young, could you please come to the microphone?
Bruce Young, 594 Indian Head Street. I had a chance to review that lease when it first came out, and then it didn't, it was passed over at the last town meeting, and it's resurfaced here. And I don't have any problems with it, other than I just want to ask, is the actual lease of those buildings, of the buildings in the two towns going to be updated as well? Those leases haven't been updated in a while. And one of the things that I, if they are going to be updated, one of the things I'd like reinstated in the lease is the right for the Selectmen to approve any subleases of the bill, of long-term subleases of the buildings that belong to the town, which was taken out at some point. But I think it's a good idea to put that back in, so the Selectmen have the authority to approve any subleases. And the other question I asked, the one thing that was controversial, I think, in both towns, especially in Whitman, that was in the lease, in the original agreement, was the fact that either town had the ability to remove themselves for the region, from the regional school district as they saw fit with a, I think it was, that required a two-thirds vote of a town meeting that had to be approved. And I noticed that had been taken out, and now the only way that you can get out of the region, I'm not saying that I'm interested in getting out of the region, but at some point, if some kind of a problem arose that either town wanted to get out of the region, it now would take a vote of the other town as well to allow that town to get out of the regional school district. I wondered whether they had removed that or modified that in any other way. So, first question's about the lease, and the second one is about the regional school agreement.
Mr. Hayes.
The leases have been updated to current 2018 standards. As far as what Mr. Young is talking about, regional agreements for regional school systems are pretty standard across the Commonwealth. Whitman had a question on it after their lawyers looked at it, the Selectmen did, and they subsequently voted it the other night, three to two, to approve.
Mr. Young.
Follow-up question on the lease, did the Selectmen approve the updates to the lease that we're giving, we cannot give a release, it requires both the school committee and also the group of folks who are in the select.
So, the question from Mr. Young is, did the Selectmen approve this change?
The Selectmen had to approve it, they voted yes.
Very good. Any other questions or concerns?
After this meeting is done, it will go back to Desi for a final looksee to make sure, and then they will have to vote it, there are several things. One of the, one of the issues with both towns is Mr. Young brought up about a regional agreement. Regional agreements shouldn't be easy to withdraw from. It would account somewhere in the, what you pay for education now, if you withdrew from the school district regional agreement, you would pay somewhere in the vicinity of thirty percent more for schools. In a non-regional agreement, in a general percentage, depending on where you were with the high school debt, because there's a ton of things you have to look at. You'd have to look at where the debt is in the two highs, with the two towns at the high school, what the others' post-employment benefits would be. Then whichever town decided to move from the agreement, they would have to put, like, let's say there's a fifty million dollar debt of others' post-employment, the town of Whitman would have to come up with sixty percent of that, and the town of Hanson would have to come up with forty percent of it before they could reorganize. So, that's what they looked at in some of the agreements, and that's why the regional agreement currently reflects what all other school districts have in the regional agreement, it's pretty much the same. This was looked at several times.
Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
Yep, just a point of clarification, we have not voted on the leases yet. I'm sure that it's imminent, but we have not taken that up as a board yet.
Mr. Mitchell.
Also, the leases have nothing to do with this agreement.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 18 is adopted. Article 19, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson General Article 2-12, Classification and Compensation, Section 11A, Professional Physicians, by amending the range for Item E, Health Agent, to forty thousand dash seventy thousand.
Seconded. Seconded, Mr. Hickey.
This is a housekeeping matter, the October 17 special town meeting approved the adjustment, however, the matrix which was approved at the May 2018 annual town meeting did not reflect the change.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 19 is adopted. Article 20, Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
I move the town vote to declare a parcel of land designated on Assessor's Map 99, Lot 12-2, and listed as Zero.
Ms. Kement.
This require, pardon? Ninety dash one? Ninety-one, okay. Thank you. I move the town vote to declare a parcel of land designated on Assessor's Map 91, Lot 12-2, and listed as Zero Liberty Street as surplus, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen dispose of said parcel in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B.
Do we have a second? Seconded, Ms. Fitzgerald Kement.
Yep, this parcel was set aside as a potential site for the Hanson Middle School Septic System. The property is no longer needed for its intended use, the Board recommends disposing of the property, and this requires a two-thirds majority vote.
Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns about Article 20? Yes, sir, could you come to the microphone, please?
I'm Chuck Hyatt from 615 State Street. Are you going to sell this on the open market, or what are you going to do with the land?
The town administrator.
Depending upon the vote here tonight of town meeting, we'll either auction it off or we'll put it out to bid.
Yeah, wouldn't you want more money for the town?
Well, that's what we would hope for, we would sell it, and hopefully put it, we would sell it either through bid or through an auction process. Not only would we get the one-time revenues, but we'd return it to the tax stream, so...
Yeah, but which, do you get more money from getting a real estate broker or auction? No?
It would all depend, we'd do an analysis, we'd go back and we'd do a, we'd have an appraisal done, and then we'd move forward, probably in a similar manner to which we did with the property up at the state, the old Plymouth County Hospital.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Norton.
Ms. Norton, 31 Indian Path in Hanson, how much property are we talking about, an acre, two acres, ten acres?
I believe it's about an acre and a half.
Yes. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 20 is, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Article 20 is adopted by a two-thirds vote. Article 21, Mr. Hickey.
I move the town vote expressly contingent on an affirmative vote by the town residents at the local town election on November 6, 2018, to amend the Town of Hanson general bylaws by amending Part III, Articles Relating to the General Public, by adding a new article, 3-24, Marijuana Retailers, to prohibit marijuana retailers in the Town of Hanson as printed in the warrants.
Seconded. Seconded, Mr. Hickey.
A yes vote would ban recreational marijuana businesses in Hanson. A no vote would allow recreational marijuana businesses in Hanson. In municipalities such as Hanson, where voters approved Question 4 in November 2016, ban on recreational marijuana businesses must be enacted by both a town meeting vote, followed by approval from voters at a regular municipal election. The municipal election is scheduled for November 6.
Just to clarify, marijuana retailers, not businesses.
On the explanation?
On the explanation, yeah.
A no vote?
Yes, I would just read that one line.
A no vote would allow recreational marijuana businesses in Hanson.
No, marijuana retailers.
Marijuana retail businesses.
Okay, I don't have that. Marijuana retail businesses.
Yeah, so, and this is going to be kind of confusing at the election, I believe. So, bears repeating, a yes vote bans recreational marijuana businesses in Hanson, a no vote would allow recreational marijuana businesses in Hanson. Now, I kind of figured this was coming up when I was on vacation over the summer, so I was in Jamaica. And I got a Bob Marley mask. So, if I think you're going on too long or off-subject, I'm just going to hold Bob Marley up, so that you know, to move it along a little bit. The, you know, quite frankly, most people in this room have already made up their minds on this issue. I don't want to stifle any debate, so we can hear from a few people if they would like to make a point. But, you know, obviously, this is something that most people have an opinion on already. So, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Soper.
David Soper, 176 High Street. Through you, Mr. Sullivan. I'd like to ask why the Finance Committee is not recommending.
Mr. Sullivan.
So, we look at everything from a fiduciary standpoint. It's not our job to interpret whether or not the citizenry should take another vote. We looked at this as any other business coming into town. It's a valid stream of revenue that comes into the town. Quite frankly, a desperate need of revenue, we don't have a lot of small businesses, this would generate revenue, we voted as such.
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That'll be my answer for the next one, too.
Mr. Norton.
John Norton, 31 Indian Path, Hanson, Mass. Through you to either the Selectmen or the Finance Committee, if anyone has made just a wild guess estimate of what kind of revenue we would be turning down if we turn this business away.
Would anybody like to address Ms. Fitzgerald Kement?
This actually came up at our... This actually came up at our, at our dry run the other night. I think Mr. Young had asked the same question, and we feel that it would be irresponsible for us to try to even estimate that. It's a new business. We don't know where other businesses are going to locate, and just like anybody who would be trying to do a business plan, would be very hard-pressed to figure that out, since we don't know what total sales will be, what our competition will be, what the pricing will be, and whether in fact anybody would locate here, and how many would locate here. So in short, we're unable to answer that question.
Mr. Sullivan.
And, and with that, we also looked at it as any other business, we wouldn't measure the validity of it based on how much revenue they bring in. A business brings in revenue, however much, that's, that's revenue. So that's how we looked at it.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Annette Beninato, 72 Brookside Drive. I recently attended an informational forum about the impacts of recreational marijuana on our communities and our youth, and I just wanted to share some of the highlights of that, that I learned from that forum. And just to start, for those of you who may not know, recreational marijuana shops sell edible products like gummy bears, lollipops, soda, and these contain high concentrations of THC. THC is the psychoactive compound that users get to, get high off of. And these shops also happen to sell THC baked goods like brownies and cookies, and of course, the marijuana itself. These edible marijuana products are appealing to our youth, and there is a growing scientific literature showing that adolescents and young adults who are regular marijuana users are at increased risk, risk for addiction and mental health disorders. Cannabis use disorder is the newest mental health disorder. From Cattle, from Colorado, we know that communities with commercial or recreational marijuana-friendly policies have some of the highest youth use rates of marijuana in that state and in our country. The fact is, availability and social accessibility determine the amount of use of this drug. I realize that we cannot stop the recreational marijuana products from coming into our town from other towns, but we don't have to add to the accessibility by having our own recreational marijuana shop that only normalizes the use and increases the use of marijuana. We don't need to saturate our community with more of this drug. And for those of you who think the sales tax revenue from recreational marijuana shops is going to be cash, a cash windfall, you are mistaken. The average recreational marijuana shop in Colorado and Washington has 2.5 million in annual sales. Our local tax rate is 3%. So our expected tax revenues for our town is $75,000 per store per year. That's minimal, minimal, compared to our annual town budget. In July 2017, Governor Baker signed legislation, legislation allowing individual towns the right to opt out of these recreational marijuana shops. We, as residents of the Town of Hanson, have the right to vote on opting out of these shops. And I urge residents to vote yes tonight to allow us, the November vote, to opt out of these recreational marijuana shops. And I also advise to vote yes on the zoning article 22. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCormick?
At least you got it with Scottish. That's okay. You said McCormick. It's Joe Campbell, 150 Woodbine Avenue in Hanson. So through you, Mr. Moderator, the esteemed colleague that I had up in the mic before spoke about some of the tax revenues that come into the town, only from the retail sales from the town itself. She didn't speak of any of the retail, of the retail tax revenue that you also regain, regain from the state. I'm glad she brought up some points about Colorado, and the Selectmen had a very good point recently where it's very hard for us to kind of crunch some numbers here in our own town. That's, that's absolutely true. We, we won't know that until things go in place. But what we can do is we can see some of those towns that have the same demographic as Hanson out there in Colorado, the people that have already been in the trenches, Colorado, California, State of Washington. In the Federal Heights community in Colorado, they legalized by ballot vote, and much like here in Hanson, it was very much the same. It was very borderline. They went through the same process that we have. They didn't get this second, second vote out there, but they did the same process that we had. It was all very close. In 2016 is when they approved their retail sales for marijuana. They're, they're very comparative to Hanson in regards to the population size. They have just under 1,250,000 people. They're a landlocked community with no major highways, no route access, no major industry in the past or future looking to move in. It's just like Hanson, folks. We're not going to get any Amazon or Google. There's nobody going to come to this town to rescue us from any kind of financial discrepancies in the future. This is an opportunity that's knocking on our door. So yes, in Colorado, they have a 4% tax as opposed to our 3% tax. But the finance officer from Federal Heights reports that a good store in their town, they have five retail shops, a good store in their town brings in $20,000 consistently every month. They have two of their five stores that they consider to be good stores. The rest of them bring in anything under 20,000 a month. So if you let that sink in for a second, that's $480,000 annually, and it's been happening every month since 2016. So we have an opportunity knocking at our door. It's, it's not a debate of in the home. That's, that's a moral debate that you need to decide for yourself. We do have this opportunity knocking at our door. It's not going to happen again. Much like everything else that passes over Hanson, this will pass over us, too. The city of Colorado Springs, Colorado, five years past the legalization in Colorado, five years later, they are now reconsidering to open retail marijuana shops inside their city. That's a city that's four times the size of us here in Hanson. So it's an opportunity that's knocking at the door. You know, if you open up another liquor store at the end of your street, is it going to make you an alcoholic? Probably not. The Board of Selectmen have all of the power and all of the opportunities still to not issue a license. They also have the power to rescind a license for somebody that's not operating properly, as well as all of the gifts that we can give to our police and our school budgets. Colorado, for the past two years, has taken $40 million and dumped it right back into their public school systems and given it right back to their emergency services, and that's how they're funding these things to make sure that everything stays legal. So it's an opportunity, ladies and gentlemen, that we can't let pass, because much like some of our neighbors, we may be in an opportunity where we might be having to ask for financial hardships and financial money and be able to bank on other people. So, much like some of the towns around us, this is an opportunity that we just can't pass.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Tom Pellerin, 157 Waltham Street. I'm originally from Lynn, and I've been living in Hanson for the last 21 years, and it's a great town to live in. Having come from an inner city, you know, we see what the results of all this, all kinds of drugs does on a city, especially like Lynn. Everybody knows the phrase, Lynn, Lynn, city is in, you never come out the way you went in. But, you know, living down in Hanson, it's been a nice community here, and I think this would change that community, having that type of drugs, especially drugs that, that are so easily, easily obtained by the children, you know, the gummy bears. This, do we want, really want this for our town? That's why I'm here. This is my first meeting tonight, you know, at the town hall. Usually I'm working and get home really late, so I'm not able to come to these town meetings, but this was an important meeting to come to. I don't want to see Hanson to become like another big city, that you have all these problems. We, we see all these, you know, police, they need to have Narcan to have all these addicts revive them. Are we going to start to have to fund the Narcan budget? You know, think of that down the road. That's, that's costly, too. I don't think we want to do that, and that's my opinion, but I wanted that to be voiced.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The major, the major reason I'm voting yes on this article, and I understand the concerns of everybody, but the major reason I'm, I'm voting yes on the article is that I certainly want to, for the very first time, Hanson is going to be possibly offering for sale recreational marijuana, and the first time in its history since 1820. So I certainly want to maximize the democratic process. And as much as I believe the town meeting is the purest form of democracy, I'm voting yes because I really don't like the idea of a beer quorum of 108 people deciding this important issue for the Town of Hanson. I'm voting yes so I can give the opportunity of the other 7,600 voters in town to go, go to the polls on November 6 and vote this up or down. And that's the reason I'm voting and the reason I encourage you to do the same thing. Whether you're for it or against it, let's not have 108 people debating this and deciding the issue for the other 7,700. This is the first time in the history of Hanson, and the first time in the Commonwealth, that recreational marijuana will be made available. So, and if you vote no on this, the ballot on November 6 is a moot issue. You go home tonight, and that decides the issue. So vote yes.
I might point out that the rest of the 7,600 people are more than welcome to come to town meeting. I'm, I'm shocked a marijuana bill only drew 108 people, but be that as it may. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paul Beninato, 72 Brookside Drive. Whether or not you support a marijuana shop in Hanson, I believe the right and responsible course of action is to vote, to essentially let the families of Hanson decide and voice their opinion. A marijuana shop may have potential added issues that the town's going to have to deal with in exchange for, you know, tax gain, maybe minimal tax gain. I believe that this issue is way too important and to not be voted as a ballot question. I just wanted to voice my opinion, say thank you, and I'm asking for a ballot question in November.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Patrick Powers, 255 Holm Street. Just a couple of things I'd like to bring forward. The state of Washington and the state of Colorado both had health departments issue for the state the use of marijuana since legalization in their youth, and they studied from grade six to grade 12. They both saw a decrease in their studies since legalization of marijuana, as well as they looked at a incremental usage. The American Journal of Public Health found that they saw a 6.5% decrease in deaths from opioids since the legalization of marijuana. So I know Narcan was brought up earlier. That's never been used in the entire country for a marijuana overdose. I understand there's a concern about, well, jeez, if we bring in drugs, if we bring in marijuana, all these other drugs are going to come rushing in. I think it's important to address that, that marijuana itself, if you go to a dealer, they're going to have other drugs, drugs available. If you go to a recreational marijuana shop, there are no other drugs legally available at that shop. If there was, the state would shut them down. The owners and the workers would likely go to jail. On top of that, children are not allowed to enter a recreational facility. To enter a facility in the state of Massachusetts, you have to show an ID. You have to be registered into a system. You have to wait in a waiting room before you're entered into a facility where there's marijuana available. On top of that, there's nothing available to display. That has to be retrieved by a certified worker that's been approved and had background checks through our state commission. On top of that, the average recreational facility will create, on average, 10 to 15 jobs in our town, per facility. An average manager at one of those facilities or supervisor makes an annual income of anywhere from $40,000 to $60,000 a year. The average part-time worker or hourly wage earner earns anywhere from 40% to 60% more than the minimum wage, which again puts jobs and puts taxes back into town. The good part about this is, and the good part about the way the state of Massachusetts has rolled this out, is they've done everything to prevent the youth from getting access to this. So just to say, hey, if we put a liquor store, all of a sudden, young people are going to start drinking again. Let's be honest. They're out there drinking. I know I've walked up and down my street and picked up those nips, right? Everybody probably has. Putting a recreational shop in the Town of Hanson won't necessarily just see a massive increase. We have the data that shows otherwise. I think it's important for us to look at this from a financial aspect, and on top of that, we as a town, the 7,000-plus voters, have had a chance three times, this is our fourth, November will be the fifth, to come and voice their opinion. So to say that our town hasn't had a chance to come and vote on this issue either at a state ballot, or at a town meeting, or go to a Board of Selectmen meeting, or come to our Finance Committee meetings, which are open meetings, is just a complete falsehood at that point. Thank you.
Mr. Pasquale Egan, I saw your hand. Yes, sir. And then after this, I may move to a vote.
Joe Gamache, 819 Main Street. I just wondered if the chief could weigh in on this subject.
Chief, do you care to weigh in? You don't have to, you know. You're not a town resident. It gives you great privileges.
Yeah, it does. It also takes a number of them away. I, I've been asked to speak against this a number of times. This isn't what Mike Mix wants. It doesn't matter what I want. Whatever laws you pass, that's what we enforce. What I didn't want to get into tonight is, everybody's throwing out numbers. Who is Mr. Campbell? He, he had, what, $2 million was the average? I read a thing where the average retail place in Colorado is bringing in $1 million. Is it worth $30,000? I don't know. The internet, so that's so, you know, that's definitely a, a great source of information, right? We can, can always check its accuracy. I've got stuff all over the place. I, I did have a friend, a colleague, who was a major on the state police in Colorado when they legalized this. I was kind of amazed by some of the things she told me. She did say, you don't want it if you don't have to have it. But it's statewide. So what we do in Hanson's bought us. We, it's here. It's in Massachusetts, and it's not going away. I am going to have to deal with safety issues regardless of what the citizens decide to do. But going back to Colorado real quick, there was a couple of, of things that she said that was very concerning, the accidents. Motor vehicle accidents have gone up. If you check most of the states, there's been issues. Now, if motor vehicle accidents go up in the town, whether it's our town or the towns neighboring us, all your insurance rates go up, too. There's always ripple effects to everything. The fatalities have gone up probably 2% or 3% is around the number they figured. And if you look at the past two fatalities we've had in our town, both of them were drug-related. It's, it's very difficult for us to enforce the OUI drugs, no matter what your drug of choice is, other than alcohol. We have no, other than alcohol, there's no scientific way to, for us to figure out what your impairment level is at the time. And then I've been asked, what's the cost to the police department? I can tell you right now, it's going to be about $8,000 right off the bat. That's because I got to train everybody in advanced roadside enforcement and interdiction, so they can, they can see the signs and symptoms of somebody being under the influence of marijuana or other drugs. You know what? I'm going to have to do that, whether we vote yes or no, because Brockton's probably getting three retail, Plymouth's probably getting three, and 27 runs between us. I would prefer that we don't have it in town, but that's my personal opinion. Again, whatever the voters decide, that's, that's the law we'll enforce, and that's how we'll deal with whatever it brings and overcome any challenges that, that you throw at us. But I think it's important to remember tonight, this isn't about the merits or, or the problems that medical, I mean, our retail marijuana might be bringing. It's about whether or not more people in the town can vote on this or not. So you need to decide, it's your town, you need to decide whether you want to vote in November on this, or you want to not do it. And like it was brought up earlier, 108 people, thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate it in the annual town meeting, because that's when we get our budgets. So, you know, if you want to bring a few friends along in the spring, that'd be great. But 108 people, you know, you guys, you're sitting here now, you have to decide whether you want to let your neighbors make that decision in November or not.
Thank you. I think we're, I think, you know, I'm not surprised, but this was a wonderful debate. I thought it was captured both sides, and it, it was very informative and illuminating. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair is in doubt. We'll go to a hand count. All those in favor of Article 21, please signify by raising up your blue card, and hold it up until the counters have had a chance to record your vote.
Is this for a yes vote?
This is yes. This is yes.
27.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
27.
27.
Four.
Four.
19.
19. All those opposed, please raise your card at this time.
20.
20.
14.
14.
11.
11.
It's going to the ballot.
Madam Clerk, you're, that's what I have as well. So by a vote of 50 to 45, the ayes have it, Article 21 is adopted. Article 22, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to amend the town of Hanson zoning bylaw expressly contingent on an affirmative vote by the town residents at the local town election on November 6, 2018, by amending Section 6, Subsection M, Marijuana Establishments, to prohibit marijuana retailers in all districts by making the following changes thereto, by deleting the text shown with a, in inserting the text shown in italics as printed in the warrant.
Oh, point of order, yes, sir, Mr. Campbell. Yes. Yeah, there are people who don't vote. For instance, I don't vote. So I, we can't poll everybody, but it was, you know, we're going to assume there is a quorum.
Can you confirm a quorum?
Pardon me?
Can you confirm a quorum?
We can, but we wouldn't be able to...
I, I thought that's what he was asking for, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'm not sure if he was asking for a quorum call.
I'd like a second on Article 22.
Pardon me? So we have someone who doubts the quorum?
I thought we had 108 people.
We had 108 to begin. Yeah, and once again, I mean, I, yeah. Once again, we have a very slim quorum, and many people choose not to vote one way or the other. For instance, I, I haven't voted since 2012 at a town meeting. If you would like to go forward with a quorum call, we can, but that would possibly mean that we won't be able to complete the business of the meeting. Oh, yeah. But they can call a quorum. Going forward, yeah. Yeah, it's a good point from our town council, as usual. If there was a quorum call, Article 21 is already legally adopted, it wouldn't apply to that, it would only be going forward.
I'm looking for a second on Article 22.
Do we, and we have a second on Article 22 from Mr. Hickey.
Should Article 21 pass banning recreational marijuana businesses in Hanson, actually marijuana retailers in Hanson, town meeting will need to amend the zoning bylaw adopted at the May 2018 town meeting addressing such. The new zoning bylaw would also indicate the recreational marijuana retailers are not allowed. This requires a 2/3 majority.
As Mr. Mitchell said, requires a 2/3 majority. This, well, that's all right. The, so my understanding is this article is contingent on Article 21 passing at the town election. Correct, Mr. Mitchell?
No, yeah, just now.
It just requires a 2/3 majority, there are going to be two ballot questions.
I got it. There will be two ballot questions at the town elections. These are independent of one another. So, any questions or comments on Article 22? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. Would someone like a, oh, I'm sorry, I don't believe either side had it by a 2/3 vote. So we'll proceed to a hand count. All those in favor signify by saying aye, or I'm sorry, signify by holding up your card.
Yeah, I'm confused.
We have a question, before, before we move to the vote, actually. One moment, Mr. Norton. Could we please have the town council just give us a quick rundown as to what a yes or a no means on this article?
So again, similar to the last article, a yes vote would pass the zoning bylaw which would prohibit marijuana retailers in the town using zoning. The reason why we have two separate bylaws on this town meeting warrant is because there is some question as to whether or not a general bylaw would serve to prohibit. It's potentially challengeable, because there's a whole line of cases which stand for the proposition that if it looks and should be a zoning bylaw, a general bylaw doesn't cut the mustard, because as you're seeing tonight, you need a 2/3 majority to pass a zoning bylaw. That said, if this, the general bylaw passes, and passes at the town election, we'll do our best to enforce that as well.
So is that clear?
A yes is to prohibit, a no is to allow marijuana retailers in the town of Hanson. That said, you've already voted on the general bylaw, which may serve to prohibit. So even if you don't get the 2/3 majority that's necessary for this particular article, you can try to fall back on that general bylaw article. Is that making sense? It's a little complicated.
Would it make, I'm sorry, just stay right here. Would it make sense to pass over this article, see what happens on November 6th?
No.
Oh, they're both on the ballot already. So, I think I've got it now. If you vote yes on this, and you're in favor, that's a no. Okay.
Okay. So both, both bylaws, what you just voted on, the general bylaw, it needs the second prong, so it needs to pass at town election to become effective. And it's just a majority at the election, okay? In order for this bylaw to pass, you need a 2/3 here at town meeting, and you need it to pass at the town election, just again, by a majority. So it's just a ratifying vote. The reason we have two is this bylaw that you're voting on right now is the conservative measure to ensure that there will be a prohibition of retailers, because someone could potentially challenge the first one. Okay? Does that, is that sensible? That makes sense.
Mr. Hayes.
Bob Hayes, 80 Green Grove Lane. Could you, just go to the microphone, please?
Bob Hayes, 80 Green Grove Lane. I guess my potentially challenging question to the general bylaw is, because we involve juries, judges, and lawyers. My issue is, it's talking about zoning specifically. If it gets challenged and you can't zone this, could you potentially, this school is on Route 58. Indian Head School is on Route 58. Shaw's is on Route 58. If it got challenged, is there a potential that a marijuana shop could open up in Dr. Smith's office across from the driveway of this school? Because there's no way I would want anything like that to happen in this town.
Town council.
Okay, so if, if everything fails that happened this evening, it fails at the election, both measures, you still have a buffer built in to your existing marijuana bylaw. So you have a 500-foot buffer from schools K through 12. So if Dr. Smith's place is 500 feet from the school, it wouldn't be allowed to be sighted there.
But it could be along Route 58. There's not such a thing as locating it in the industrial park, we'll say on 27, and keeping it off Route 58. That was the question I had the last time. This is the main corridor in this town, and so is Route 27. But the very fact that Route 58 has two school districts on it, there is absolutely, positively no way, because this is the potential I see, and I hate to bring this up, because I'm going to get booed. The marijuana dispensary could be on 58, but somebody 21-years-old could be standing on the sidewalk 1,000 feet away and selling joints to kids walking home from school, and I am 1,000% against that. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but in my opinion, I think that would be a problem.
So the existing bylaw, which was passed in May, has an overlay district, and that is, and, and you'll know these areas better than I will, but it's the business district, which also has frontage on Route 27, so I don't know if that's the route that you're talking about, Franklin Street and Main Street. Okay? No.
But my question, Kate, is generally, could they challenge it? You were saying it couldn't get challenged.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. So at last town meeting, we passed a zoning bylaw, and that's the more conservative approach, and the zoning bylaw took care of making retailers, cultivators, product manufacturers to be sighted only in this particular area that I just cited to you.
Perfect.
Yes, so you're right.
I just wanted to be clear with that. I requested that before, and I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, so if it fails, the old bylaw that you passed just in May would be in effect, and that limits the areas where these types of businesses, including retail, could be located. And I, I guess 27 isn't 58. I'm confident on that.
Any other questions or concerns? Great. So, again, by a 2/3 vote, all those in favor, please signify by holding up your yellow, your blue card until it can be recorded.
Should I be allowed to vote?
I am.
I just choose not to. You should help. If we ever have a 50-50 tie, I'll lost out.
Mr. Norton.
28.
28.
Four.
Four.
17.
17. All those opposed, Article 22, please signify by raising your blue card at this time.
19.
19.
15.
15.
Nine.
Nine. So by a vote of 49 yea, 43 nay, it fails to achieve 2/3. Article 22 is not adopted. Article 23, Mr. Blouse.
I move the town vote to designate the following parcels as comprising an Economic Opportunity Area, EOA, for a 10-year period, and submit same to the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, EACC, as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Blouse.
An economic opportunity area, EOA, is an area which is designated by the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, EACC, as an economic opportunity area pursuant to Mass. General Laws Chapter 23A and 3E. This vote will request that the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council take such action. An economic opportunity area stimulates job creation in distressed areas, attracts new businesses, and encourages business expansion through eligibility for state tax credits and local incentives, such as tax increment financing agreements, TIFs.
Could we just have someone state what these parcels are, just generally?
At the present, these parcels are on Main Street. There are four parcels in the area of the former Ocean Spray Cranberry Company.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Soper.
Yes, David Soper, 176 High Street. Just for full disclosure, before I get into my question, I am a project manager for the development down there, and I've helped precipitate this whole economic opportunity area. So my question is, why is it only for a 10-year period, and what happens after 10 years?
Mr. McHugh, the town administrator.
The town has an option for renewal after 10 years. 10 years was recommended by the, the individuals that we're speaking to with the state.
Okay, as a follow-up, is there some type of, is there precedence where a town has since sunsetted such economic, economic areas, and, and, you know, what would happen if that zone or area wasn't fully developed within the 10-year period?
The town at that time would consider renewal or extension. Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 23 is adopted. Article 24, Ms. Fitzgerald Kemmet.
I move the town vote to pass over Article 24.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Ms. Fitzgerald Kemmet has moved to pass over this article. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 24 is passed over. I now adjourn the town meeting sindai.